The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
We are ready to start. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to June 6, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Very pleased to have you join us this evening. And to start out our meeting, we're going to have the National Anthem sung or performed by our instrumentalist from Northeast and directed by our reigning Teacher of the Year for a short period longer, Sharon Vogt. So if you remain standing after the anthem, we will go right to the pledge.
I, the leading official of the United States of America, and the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Students, we want to thank you again every time we have a new group of students who demonstrate how great music is in our school district. And you always show us how well you're teaching our elementary children. So thank you very much.
Before we start our formal agenda this evening, I would like to all introduce to you a new face at the Board of Education. We have Naked C and Crystal Giantonio on my left. Between Joe and Jen has agreed to join us. We're pleased to have you here. Crystal will be serving on the Finance Committee. The Student Achievement as an alternate and Policy Committee, if my memory is correct.
Thank you Chairman.
It doesn't work without people like all of us agreeing to stand up and work for democracy. And so we appreciate that you agree and deserve it. Thank you.
I'm honored. Thank you.
At this moment, I would like us to take a moment of silence. One of our former staff who's passed away, Catherine Z Mecca, who was a teacher in the district from September 1st, 69 to December 3rd, 68. Our first item on the agenda is Staff and Student Recognition.
Good evening Commissioners. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Mr. Michael Reynolds, who is a Grade 6 Social Studies teacher at Chippins Hill Middle School, who was selected as our Bristol 2019 Teacher of the Year. Mr. Reynolds emerged as a top candidate for many staff members nominated by colleagues, and he will represent Bristol's teachers in the Teacher of the Year competition. Mr. Reynolds is passionate about learning within a community. Throughout this selection process, he shared a multitude of ways in which he develops a community of learners.
Where he shows his students that he himself is a learner as much as they are. He shared that he has a growth mindset as he is constantly adapting, adjusting, and looking for innovative ways to build a positive and productive partnership between home and school, increase student motivation and interest, differentiate instruction, and improve student success both academically and socially. By seeking students' input on their learning and his instructional practices, he uses his students' own voices, desires, and goals to inform the approaches he takes in the classroom. Mr. Reynolds also understands that learning is not an individual process, and he shows his value of learning communities not only within his own classroom through the sense of the community he creates there, but also through his own willingness to participate in professional learning communities. He shared the teaching profession has become increasingly more demanding, so more than ever, teachers need to rely on the best resources available to them, each other. He wrote Bristol is a community of learners and educators who work together to collaboratively reach a common goal of helping children to develop into critical and creative thinkers and problem solvers. Mr. Reynolds has been teaching for 20 years in Bristol. He was an elementary teacher at Southside School prior to arriving at Chippins Hill Middle School three years ago. Mr. Reynolds earned a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education and a Master's Degree in Reading and Language Arts, both from Central Connecticut. There was one statement that Mr. Reynolds shared that to the selection committee summarized his philosophy and approach to teaching on a daily basis. He shared, "Fair or not, our students expect and need us to be amazing. So to put it simply, we need to be amazing every day. There is no Happy Friday. There is Happy Monday, Happy Tuesday, Happy Wednesday." And so, we are very happy today to announce Mr. Reynolds as Bristol Teacher of the Year.
Let's see, do I see Mr. Bagley?
I'm the next one.
A substitute, okay. Another performance by Mrs. Vogt. You're going to honor the students from their festival participation.
That's right. Mr. Bagley is unable to be here this evening as he has a community commitment with his family. Thank you Commissioners and Dr. Moreau. Each year, the Connecticut Music Educators Association sponsors music festivals in each of the four regions of the state, as well as an All-State Festival. Students audition to be part of these festivals by preparing solos, scales, and sight reading. Bristol is part of the Northern Region, and each year, close to 2,000 students audition to be part of a festival chorus, band, orchestra, or jazz band. Tonight, we recognize the students from Bristol that have achieved this goal of being selected for a festival ensemble. And I'll call up the students by school, and please hold your applause until all students from, actually, I'll say from all the schools have been recognized. Because this evening, there are performances and other honor assemblies happening, so we have quite a few students who are unable to be here. So I'll just, I'll call the names, and if you are here, please come on up. And actually, why don't you stand maybe in a line right here, and then we'll do certificates. So Green Hills, from Green Hills, we have Ann Antis and Rachel Ross. Chippins Hill Middle School, Benjamin Marin, Isabella Siri, Colin Singer, and Ashley Totten. And from Northeast Middle School for Chorus, the Northern Region Chorus, we have Faith Boyard and Alexia Newman. Yeah. So Faith and Alexia were in Northern Region Chorus, and Calista Santiago and Hetty Wells were in the Northern Region Band. From Bristol Central High School, we have Caitlin Delval Band, Katie Formuto Band, Norman Whitney Orchestra, Megan Woolley Band. From Bristol Eastern High School, Luke Ashworth Band, William Cushing Chorus, Haley Nappick Chorus, Alex Mica Chorus. Those are all the regional winners. Now, the following students went to the next level in order to even audition for All-State. They had to have also made regionals. So from Bristol Central High School, who made the All-State Band, Cory Woolley, and also in the All-State Band, Monica Woolley. And from Bristol Eastern, in All-State Band, a trumpet player that I started named Matt Gerard. So I'd like to congratulate all of the regionals winners this year. What school are you guys from? What school are you from? Okay, come on over here and I'll give you certificates. Um, let's see. Let me find you. What are your names? Let's show you, Isabella. Okay. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you.
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce our Teacher of the Gifted, Alan Theriot. And he will be introducing students who just returned from the National Invention Convention. They're all at the elementary level. This year, our gifted coaches expanded the program to many more schools than we have had previously. Mr. Theriot? He's got to move the prop.
Thank you everybody for having us. We have three incredible inventors. They're a little bit nervous tonight, so bear with us. Thanks to Barnes Group and Liberty Bank, we had received grant money, so we did have seven gifted coaches run invention conventions. From the school-wide convention, we did do a citywide. We also had regionals, and then the state competition at Gamble. From Gamble, our three inventors who are here tonight, Jaden Cologne, Aaron Burke, and Emily Walls, advanced to Dearborn, Michigan for the national finals. Aaron, I think ducked out. He wasn't feeling quite well, little nerves. So Jaden's going to start us off, and then Emily's back there. She's going to come up next. I know Dr. Huber's going to probably accompany her up here to ease the transition a little bit. So this is Jaden Cologne from Ivy Drive School.
Alright, hello. My name is Jaden Cologne, and my invention is called the Lazy Man's Paintbrush. So the problem that my invention solves is that it's easy and quick on-the-go painting that helps utilize fine motor skills. So, how my invention works is you would take one of the syringes and push the color of the one that you want. It would go through the syringe, through the airline tubing, through the tips of a mechanical pencil, and onto the paintbrush. Then you would just paint, just like that. And, yeah.
Jayden, what grade are you in?
I'm in fifth grade.
Are you prepared to do a quick demo?
Yeah.
We can move. We can move.
These are for us.
There's fewer of us.
So here comes the Lazy Man's Paintbrush.
Alright, so now I'm going to put it good, and this is green. Also, what inspired my invention was like the pen with like multiple colors on it. When you switch the color, that's what inspired my invention. So now, if I wanted to switch the color, I would clean it. It doesn't do clean and normal like this, wipe it off in water, like that. And then I'll take a napkin, and I can dry it off. So then now, if I wanted to use yellow for something. So what I made was just some grass, some sun, and some birds.
Jaden was coached by Casey Reynolds, who's our gifted coach at Ivy Drive. She couldn't be here tonight because her husband, I guess, is getting some sort of an award. So, thank you to Casey for her hard work. Our next inventor is Emily Walls, who actually won a very prestigious award at the state level for her portable safety belt to be used on school buses. And this is Emily and her mom and dad, Emily Walls from Southside.
She made the safety belt. She said that a few times that she rode a school bus, she was very nervous after she bumped around in her seat. So she didn't want any other child to feel that way. So we welded together these base plates because we could not find anything that would actually work. This is the rough cut of it, and then we grinded it down to make it nice and smooth like this. And then we spray painted it. And then we took old ratchet straps and put them up to make that little belt part. And then we had an old speedboat from a pickup truck, put all the pieces together.
Well, you slide it into the bus seat, and these will just stay held by the back of the bus seat. So when you're off the bus, you take it and throw it in the bag. That way it's rolled on, not in the bus.
Again, Emily did win a safety award at the state level. So I think Dr. Huber just said she's probably going to make a lot of money with this someday. Our third inventor is Aaron Burke. Aaron is an Ivy Drive student, and he has the anti-theft delivery box, which is really cool. Maybe I can put it on the table. And Julia Darcy worked with Emily at Southside. She couldn't be here. She was going to be, but something came up last minute.
We have to pull this track hold to get it in the suitcase. Alright, so let's explain. What do you say now?
So, my name is Aaron Burke from Ivy Drive Elementary School, and my invention is anti-theft delivery box. The problem I recognized was during, around Christmas time, I saw a lot of news stories in like some surveillance footage of people stealing packages off of people's front steps. So my solution was to build a game to keep deliveries safe. So when, so there's a drop slot up here, and there's a grate so you can't stick your hand down in. And then when you want to retrieve your packages, you can undo, you can do the code here. And it's also paintable. You could design it as another, you could like bolt it to your house, or design it as another yard decoration replaster. And, so.
Yeah.
I also want to recognize the inventor trophy at the state level.
Nice, a recognized inventor trophy. So again, maybe this makes a ton of money someday too, right?
It's a national, so.
They all just got back Monday and Tuesday for Michigan, so everybody's a little bit exhausted. Very nice job. Excellent. Thank you.
The trip to Michigan was quite expensive. All three of the students' families set up the funding pages. They reached their total so that they could travel, as well as additional funding from the Bristol Board of Education Employees Immediate Response Fund and the Men and Boys Immediate Response Fund, both at the Main Street Community Foundation. So I thank all of the donors who helped these students to go and have this amazing experience.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Carroll. I had the honor, I teach at Northeast Middle School. I had the honor of directing the musical at Bristol Eastern this year. And we participated in the Seven Angels Halo Awards competition, and we were nominated for eight awards, which was pretty excellent for our first time. Logan Zedon and Anna Corponte were both nominated for Featured Actor and Actress in a Musical, as well as the performance by a dynamic duo in a musical. And we're proud to say that we did win Best Orchestra, which was mostly comprised of students from Bristol Eastern, which were led by our music director, Teresa Deegan, who is also an Eastern alum. So it was a pretty excellent experience being part of the musical this year. And we did bring Logan and Anna, and Anna Santa Cruz as well, to perform a number from All Shook Up, which was our musical. The scene is that Dean and Lorraine are about to be separated because his mother is sending him away to military school, and yet they have not even had a chance to kiss yet. Anna, Logan, Anna. We're very high-tech here.
Hold on. My high-techness.
It's now or never. Come hold me tight. Kiss me, my darling. Be mine tonight. Tomorrow will be too late. It's now or never. My love holds wait.
We were lovers, darling. With your smile so tender. My heart was captured. My soul surrendered.
Your lips excite me.
Let your arms invite me. For who knows when we'll meet again this way.
It's now or never.
It's now or never. Come hold me tight. Kiss me, my darling. Be mine tonight. Tomorrow will be too late. It's now or never. It's now or never. It's now or never. My love won't wait. It's now or never. My love won't wait.
Now we get on to the business, the boring business of the Board of Education. It's hard to come off of that, but before you now is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented unless there's any changes or corrections. We have such a motion. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes, but I do have a small request. As I read the CEP.
Can we get the motion on the floor first, and then we'll make the change?
Oh yeah, I make a motion if we approve the meeting minutes?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And so I presume you have a change.
Yeah, I just would ask, there was an awful lot of discussion, I don't know, about CEP last month. There is, the basic information you need needs to be here. I would personally feel much better if we just had the statement that said the community eligibility program was implemented, rather than an adjective. It looks like the rest of the statement was just statements, and with all the discussion we had, I'd prefer not to have any adjectives associated with that.
Where are you talking to?
So it says the community eligibility program was successfully implemented at West Bristol and Hubble School. As you recall, we had an awful lot of discussion about the fiscal aspects of it, and without getting too deep into this last night, I think we saw that our budget was not necessarily looking like it was going to be positive this year. So I just think for the safety of the minutes and reflecting this, we had so much discussion, I'd rather not have any adjectives associated with this. The vote is the important part. I don't think that making statements one way or the other is important.
So do you have a specific recommendation?
Yes, eliminate the words successfully, please.
Anybody object to those changes? If not, I think you're ready to vote with the change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on to committee reports. We'll start with Student Achievement first.
Okay. The Student Achievement Committee met on Wednesday, May 16th, and we had three items on our agenda. The first was a presentation on offering hockey as a potential sport. Chris Cassin was going to be looking into some of the logistics of that for us and report back to the committee. Accountant One had its first reading, and most excitingly, we got an update on the middle school schedule. I know it has been a burden on my heart, as well as Commissioner Taylor's, to have sixth grade students the opportunity to have all three electives, and we will be piloting a new schedule at Chippins Hill Middle School starting this coming fall, which will allow students to have all three of those options. As long as the schedule is successful, it can be then implemented throughout the rest of the district. So thank you very much Carly and your team. You did an amazing job on that daunting task of a schedule. That's all I have.
Many questions? If not, we will move on to policy. If not, we will move on to policy.
Sure, we met in May and we reviewed about eight policies, which are coming up later in deliberated items where we will either affirm, remove, or also revise policies.
Operations?
Operations Committee met. I was not there. Mr. O'Brien handily managed the meeting. The committee approved an engineer for oil tank removals at Bristol Central, Bristol Eastern, and the Board of Education building. And members of the Bristol Eastern High School community came to request approval to construct dugouts. The committee had further questions, which we expect they will return with answers.
Maybe it's not in the minutes, but there was a request to have your committee look at the feasibility study again. So I would ask you to put that on the agenda for your next operations committee.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for waiting until I came back.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Moreau? You got that right? I got that.
Okay.
Thanks.
And we will go to Finance next.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met last night. We had some reports on several things. We had our monthly update on the current year's budget, as well as information about the Special Services Report and Food Services. We also spoke, and we'll get into this in more detail when we vote on next year's budget. But we did have a discussion on some reductions that we are going to need to make in order to meet the budget that we are going to be voting on. I'm happy to say that none of them have a very strong impact on academics. Many of them came from custodians, not the people, not the people, but supplies and maintenance. And then things like electricity and postage, things like that. So that was good news, and we'll vote on that budget. And the retirements, yes. And we'll vote on that budget later on in the evening. We also had a report, and Mrs. Brown is going to give some more information on this, on the ED-001 report. I'm sure, well, I'm not sure, but I imagine that many of you have heard that there was an issue with our ED-001 report for this past year. That is a document, a very intensive, multi-page document that is reported to the state. And it's the primary source for the government for financial information for public schools in Connecticut, pre-K through 12. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Brown and Dr. Dieter to give a little bit more detail.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just to repeat what Mrs. Vibert said, regarding our budget status update, we do have very little change since our last Board of Education meeting. We are continuing to anticipate a end-of-year deficit of approximately $1.28 million. At about the mid-year mark, we were anticipating a shortfall just in special education of about $1.6 million. Since that time, we instituted a spending freeze, a hiring freeze, and operated with regality in every department. The result of that is we're ending up with a $1.28 million projected deficit, rather than a $1.6 million. So we did gain some ground there. When we met at the City Board of Finance meeting, Dr. Moreau requested an additional allocation of $1.28 million at that time to finish this fiscal year. That will address our shortfall in transportation, special education, and just a little bit in maintenance. It does consider our revenues that come from the rental of our building sites, our tuitions, Medicaid, adult education grant funding, and excess cost grant funding. There's one more grant allocation that we are expecting from the state, and that is the grant for displaced students that you've heard Dr. Dieter speak an awful lot about. The formula for that from the state keeps on morphing and changing to allow the state to offer relief to as many communities as possible. So we didn't want to count our eggs before they hatched, I suppose. So when that does come in, that will be turned over to the city in its entirety. And that will bring us down closer to the $1 million mark. That's my budget status update for this evening. Regarding our transfers, on the transfer report, you see a few entries there. The first is what the Finance Committee approved at our last meeting in April. There are several entries for grant revisions, and then other entries that take from memberships, para salaries, and go into professional services, and then some very minor transfers in music, art, maintenance, and special ed. Regarding the cafeteria report, very little change in the cafeteria. We do see continuing cash sale declines. The forecast has been decreased by $20,000 in the cash sale area. Federal reimbursement this May came higher than projected. So we do continue to forecast a deficit in the cafeteria of about $66,000. If there are any questions on that, I'll go into the ED-001 issue. Just to bring everybody up to speed, as Commissioner Vibert described, the ED-001 is a state report that reports all of the expenditures in the public school system. It's a schedule, 12-schedule report that feeds into each other like dominoes. And often, when you get to the end, it doesn't balance. The report opens up for data entry on August 1st, and it takes the entire month of August to complete, and it must be turned in by the end of the day, September 1st. We received an adjustment, as many districts do, and as is typical, to our ED-001 report. The adjustment was a little over half a million dollars. It was $501,702. What was bothersome, I suppose, is we received a letter January 29th stating that there would be an adjustment in our favor of $114,209 that was sent to the superintendent. And she sent it over to Diane Waldron, the comptroller, on January 29th. That letter also said that if there were any changes, as again are typical, that we would be notified in the spring. But we received no notification. No districts received any notification. It didn't go out from the state. So when Diane Waldron, the comptroller's office, didn't receive all the funding that she was expecting, she asked me to call, and that's when we found out that this adjustment had been made. And it hurts the bottom line because the swing from a positive $114,000 to a negative $501 is almost $616,000. So we've been investigating this since the moment we found out. What we are doing is recreating the report that accounts for every single dollar of our high-cost special education spending in the 16, 17 school year. We've been pulling every single purchase order for tuition, every single purchase order for transportation, and summing it up, student by student. We've completed that process and have now begun to analyze any discrepancy between what we have pulled from our books and what was reported to the state. We will finish that as soon as possible. We probably need two to three more weeks to finish the complete analyzing. And what our goal is to be able to say to the state, this is what we spent. And the grant funding is there for relief of excess cost expenditures. So regardless of what was reported or why, this is what the city of Bristol spent. We're hopeful that we'll get some relief, possibly through special legislation later in the year, or possibly in the form of an adjustment in the subsequent fiscal year. If you have any questions, I'm happy to.
And I think this is to your benefit as well. I would like to publicly state that you were not on board during this filing period. And I know that Dr. Moreau had mentioned that we had a vendor on board at that point, Time Management Systems, and something I thought about after. Is there a potential for a liability claim against them? And is that something that we're looking into?
Yes, we are. Once we get all the information first.
We're looking into and we're going to check against the records that we have and then attempt to reconstruct what he did.
We can't really go as far as seeing a liability claim until we have everything.
Okay, that wasn't mentioned, so I just thought I would ask. I appreciate that, thank you.
We've actually had several positions that have contributed to this report. We had a special education accountant leave Bristol in, I think it was the early summer. The former business manager left sometime in the summer, may or may not have started the ED-001 report, but didn't complete it. And then we had the Time Management Solutions. So we've had kind of a lot of hands in the pot. And until we get all of the data, we won't really be sure how or why or when any of those discrepancies happen. But we'll keep you updated and keep you informed as to what our findings are.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I'll be reporting out on the typical data points that we've reviewed in previous meetings. All of my reports were reviewed extensively last evening in the Finance Committee meeting. So foremost, our marginal costs for this last period. These are costs associated, unanticipated costs associated with new enrollment or changes in enrollment. Over this past month, we've experienced, the activity is approximately $40,000 that we've expended due to new enrollment or changes in enrollment. Over the period of time from January, excuse me, February to January 1, the total marginal cost has grown quite extensively. In fact, it's currently sitting at $479,000. We will be preparing a report at the end of the year when we're able to capture all of the activity, as well as project forward if that enrollment trend continues and if the students remain enrolled in Bristol Public Schools, what the annual cost associated with those students will be. For displaced students, we continue to maintain enrollment of 39 students. And breaking down further with our June 1 new enrollment, we had a total of 37 new students enroll in district. Seven of those students qualify for special education-related services, which is 19% of new enrollment. Any questions thus far? I was asked to complete a special services graduation report. So among all of our eligible graduates for the 2018 graduation anticipated in June, we have a total of 141 special education students that will be graduating and moving on to post-secondary pursuits. At this time, we anticipate that we will continue to provide programming for 17 students. So that would be either, we refer to it as fifth year or transition services. And as a reminder, we've discussed in the past that there's a small cohort of students that are determined eligible for services through the age of 21. And these are the students that I'm referring to. Be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
This is probably a subject that couldn't be more apropos than this evening after we saw the performances we saw, both our instrumentalists and our performers. When Representative Ziogas was first elected, he did something very unusual. He came to me as a Board of Ed person, and he said, you know, what can I do to help you? And so we started talking about a vision that we had that we could turn Memorial Boulevard into a 6 through 12 arts magnet school. And so he heard that. He didn't, he liked the idea. And so he put us in contact with the people at Department of Administrative Services, set up a meeting with Dr. Moreau and myself. And they talked us through the process and told us what we needed to do. They told us it would be a hard struggle, but, you know, they thought it was possible. And so both Kermit Thompson and Barbara Fabiani have been working with us from the beginning at the Department of Administrative Services to help us through that process. Then Representative Ziogas started doing the politicking thing. He got Speaker Erzamowitz to come out to Bristol and tour the facility and see it, and started thinking about the possibilities. And he had some other obstacles to overcome. He had to convince the chairs of the Education Committee that this was a good idea. And one of our problems is we'd kind of gotten in late for this year based on normal timeframes. But we always know that those timeframes can be somewhat flexible as long as we can get our support and advocacy in line. So Representative Ziogas was able to accomplish that. And about a month ago, we were notified that we had actually received the grant. And we're very excited about it. We think it has great possibility for the families and students of Bristol. And Representative Ziogas was instrumental in creating a foundation for us to build this school going forward and support those families. I don't know if you all know that, but many, many of our students leave the district to go to correct schools for performing arts, as well as many of our students go to the Hartford Magnet Schools for the performing arts. So we believe that it would be a long-term savings for the state if we could have those students stay in district and get that same rigorous themed education of performing arts. But I will say, and Dr. Moreau has corrected me many times, it's not about just the performing arts. But there's lighting, there's set design, there's all other aspects of the theater production program. And many of you know that the city had already allocated $13.2 million or $13.4, I forget exactly the number, to develop just the theater and the heating system. So this is really a great investment and part of the city's part. For another $4 million, we get a whole school renovated, just not the theater portion. So we wanted to bring Representative Ziogas in to thank him publicly and appreciate his work and effort. You know, many people told me, oh, Chris, he won't get it done. He's a freshman legislator, he can't get it done. But that didn't thwart him. He kept moving forward and walking forward and talking to people and getting support lined up, and he got it done. So we want to thank you very much for your work and effort.
I don't know if you wanted to say anything?
That's what I was going to say, so. But just to keep in mind that there was a strong community effort to save the theater, starting back in maybe 2008, give or take. Yeah, I have a letter dated 2008 under the administration of Artie Ward. And then later on, Ken Cockain picked that up and continued to move that ball forward. And now Ellen Zappo is certainly an advocate for that. And as Chris mentioned, July of last year, the Board of Finance and the City Council approved 13.2, call it, 13, use a round number. If we brought home 54, it's a 68% reimbursement. So that's $38 million, give or take, that the state is giving us for nothing. We make up the $17 million of difference. They already allocated 13. So for another $4 million, as Chris indicated, you're probably going to be able to expand maybe, I'm going to guess, 80,000 square foot of building space at a very beautiful building that everybody in town wanted to protect, architecturally at least. So I think it's a big win. So certainly, I was very happy to be part of that process. And I'm guessing, from the conversation that we had about the finances, that you may want to talk to me about what's going to happen this summer, if we can be of some help. If, in fact, they happen to open up the budget this year for other issues, you know? So maybe I can help with that, too. We don't know. We should talk about it, though. All right, so anyways, that's where I'm at with that. And I guess I'm happy to help, you know? So thank you very much for your kind words.
Thank you, Chris.
The next item on my report is, you'll recall, I think I spoke about it last month, that CAE has awarded us a grant where they're going to come in and help us as a board have some community conversation about diversity and equity. And so that meeting with our board will take place next week after the Student Achievement Committee meeting. It'll be about a 45-minute meeting with Representative John Ramos, who used to be the former superintendent of Bridgeport, as well as Mary Broderick, who was the former Chair of East Line Board of Education. She was the CAE chairman of, Board of Chairman. And she was also the National School Board Association President. So those two will lead us through a discussion on how we have a community conversation about equity, cultural competency, and diversity. So that will be next. and diversity. So that will be next Wednesday at 7:30. And that concludes my report for this evening. We are now to our student representatives, and it looks like we only have one.
Good evening, Dr. Moreau, Board of Education Commissioners. I just want to start off by saying thank you. Throughout this school year, I was able to grow and gain insight on how the Board of Education works. As I continue my education at the University of Connecticut to be a teacher, I know this opportunity to be Bristol Eastern Student Representative will provide me with the confidence and background knowledge that will help me to become the best I can. This past month, and even in June, the seniors are getting ready to head off into the real world and start another chapter of their life. As our graduation date nears, we have already held our senior picnic to sign our yearbooks, and we are looking, we are all looking forward to grad night where we'll have a safe but an amazing night. Last night, or last month, the juniors were able to celebrate their success in their SATs with cotton candy tattoos, a dunk tank occupied by Mrs. Calvi Rogers, and lots of other fun activities, which include duct taping Mr. Higgins to a tree in the courtyard during their lunches. During May, we also had two well-attended and well-organized proms for the juniors and seniors. Everyone had a blast. Last Thursday, Student Council, the club that hosts, that hosts most of Eastern's main events like blood drives, homecoming, and in the future, hopefully, Mr. BEHS elected new officers to get a jumpstart on next year's activities. Also, last Thursday, Chris Heron, former professional basketball player with the Celtics, came to present his story of overcoming, overcoming addiction. His story and presentation was unlike the typical "don't do drugs," but captivated the audience by allowing them to see the struggle and success, all while being under the influence of drugs and alcohol. He captures students' interests, but if you were caught talking or joking, he made sure to point out that while he is making it an interactive and enjoyable presentation, it is still a serious topic that needs to be given attention to. Last Saturday, Friends of Rachel hosted a free car wash for the community and collected over $800 in donations to help their Relay for Life team, which exceeded their overall goal of 6,000. This week, National Honor Society will be hosting their last dodgeball tournament of the year tomorrow at 3:30. They're looking forward to an afternoon of friendly competition and tons of excitement. The class of 2021, soon to be sophomores, are excited for a period of fun tomorrow. Their Lancer Nation mentors have planned a field day, which includes kickball, tug-of-war, relays, and other contests the freshmen will compete in to determine the best homeroom. And so over this, over the past year, our school has grown into a new school. With new freshmen and transfers and even new faculty, we have managed to come together and do some really exciting activities. Thank you for pushing our education system to be the best it can be and always looking out for the students. I am so glad I was able to say that I was the 2017, 2018 Student Representative for Bristol Eastern, and I wish the future representatives the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't say without any hesitation that you've raised the bar for everybody in terms of student representative. And I will say what I've always said to the students, I hope you take the opportunity at some point, after you get acclimated to school three or four or five months, come back and just come to public comment and chat with us and tell us how you're doing and what you're doing. Because this, we really like to hear from you. We'd like to hear your voice. Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna ask Madison to join me. We want to present you with the Bristol Board of Education Student Leadership Award.
Thank you.
And thank you for a wonderful year of growth and information. And again, as Chairman Wilson said, we welcome, welcome you back to tell us all about UConn.
Of course, thank you.
And of course, we'd love to welcome you back in four years as a teacher. [laughing] Good evening, Commissioners. As Madison said, we're going to welcome some new representatives to the Board of Education tonight. And first, from Bristol Central, on the end there, we have Abby Grant Christie. Abby will surely make her dreams of studying neuroscience come true. She's currently ranked number one in the junior class. In addition to her rigorous academic schedule, she's the Vice President of the National Honor Society, participated in Northeast Region's Band Festival, has been a member of the indoor and outdoor track teams for three years, plays in the concert band, is a member of the step team, and volunteers her time as part of the Interact Club and Senior Center. You stand to be recognized. Welcome. And joining her is actually a student who will be a junior next year. This is Katie Funk. Katie's an active member of the track and cross-country teams in the flute choir and band, and is a member of the Interact Club, which is the youth division of the Rotary Club. Rotary Club is sending Katie to a youth leadership training at Springfield College next month. Katie is a dedicated student of Latin and has scored in the top 15% on the state Latin exam. She's also a member of the Spanish Honor Society. Katie hopes to bring valuable student opinions to the board and serve as a representative to the board during both her junior and senior years. So welcome, Katie. And from Bristol Eastern, Lori Chen. Lori attended the May Board of Education meeting just to see if she wanted to join us as a student representative. Lori's first language is Mandarin. She arrived in the United States when she was seven years old. She's worked really hard to learn enough English to allow her to be successful on tests like the SAT. She is her class' public relations officer, maintains a QM average above 4.0, helps out a teacher at Stafford School, is currently enrolled in AP Psychology and AP Chemistry and Accelerated Spanish, and she hopes to become a doctor. She'll be participating in a seven-week educational program this summer at Harvard, and that should round you out a little bit more than you already are. Welcome. And next... You heard from him earlier. Logan Zeddun is a leader among his peers. On March 14, he led a group of students outside to honor the lives of the students and staff who were lost at Parkland, Florida. He serves as the Director of Fun, which to me has to be the greatest title ever, for the Bristol Blues. As you saw earlier, Logan's an actor, a singer, and active member of the BE Theater Arts Program. He's a vet moved performer at the OM Show as well. Logan runs for the cross-country team. We have a lot of runners here. Interesting. And serves as the captain. Logan has consistently been on the honor roll, and he wants to major in Communications when he graduates from high school. Welcome to all of you, and we look forward to hearing from you. Last week, Commissioner Wilson and I attended the Avid Celebration at Bristol Eastern. It's a really wonderful event to attend. We sit among families, and I was particularly moved to hear the mother of a student say that not only was this going to be a program that helped her daughter, but she herself had gone back and graduated from college as a result of her daughter being in the Avid program. It doesn't get any better than that. And so these students who are in the Avid program end up taking AP courses that when they went to high school to start, they weren't sure would ever happen. And each of them received a $6,000 scholarship, $6,000 scholarship from the ECMC Corporation. They do grant student loans, but this program's been occurring at Eastern probably for eight to 10 years, where the students in this program receive these awards. And there were also students there who started in the program at Chippens Hill Middle School. When Dr. Carbone was there, she started the Avid program for 7th and 8th graders. So it was pretty exciting to hear that. And I said, next year, Dr. Carbone must go to the Avid graduation, because she has two students at Eastern who have gone through the program, have been incredibly successful. It was a great night. Also, last week was the poetry... Oh, please. Yes.
I happened to sit at another table, not with Dr. Moreau, and I sat with the parents, and I chatted with them. And it was Manuel from Mexico, who, whose daughter was gonna be going to Clarkson University on a full scholarship, I believe. And he was so thankful that we had that program. He and his wife both said they didn't really know anything about college, how to navigate it, how to, what to do to get into college in the United States. And so they were very thankful. I think their only regret was that their younger child is not gonna be able to access the program in middle school, because we don't have it in middle school any longer. And then I also spoke with Richard from Ecuador, and his comments were very similar. His daughter is going to be a nurse at the Southern State University. So it was, if any board member has an opportunity to go to that session and sit down and chat with the families, I think you'd be better for it.
Indeed. I'll make sure you all get invitations. I don't know if you were all invited, so I will make sure that happens. Onto poetry night. Every year, Mr. Theriot, who you saw earlier with our Invention Convention kids, really inspires our gifted students to express themselves with poetry. And Dr. Cormier, Ken Cormier, who works with the students on, in poetry sessions, and I had to be the judges. And it is incredibly difficult. We judge them for both their performance and their poetry. And they get very small tokens for that, but if you could have seen them, you would have thought we presented them with really big checks. Poetry is a great way for students going through adolescence to get out their feelings in a very safe and positive way. And if you listen to these poems, it's a lot of adolescent angst in them, but at the same time, some really happy kids. So it's always something enjoyable. And finally, coming up on the horizon, our central office team is going to norm and form our team of six and set some priorities for the upcoming year, and plan some work we're gonna be doing with principals and supervisors at the BAP's retreat in July. And so we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Next item on your agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull any items out of the consent agenda? If no one wants to pull any items out of the consent agenda, I would accept the motion for approval.
So second?
Second. Is it properly made and seconded? Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now come to public comment. The sheet is coming to me. We're gonna ask that you come to the speaker's podium to make your comments, and you direct them to the chair, which is me. And just so that you know, it's, we probably won't be able to give you an answer tonight if it's a question, but if it's an easy question that we can answer, we will. But otherwise, we will get back to you. But the first speaker is William Matos.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. My name is Bill Matos, and this is my wife Heidi, and we reside at 96 Vine Road here in Bristol. We're here to obtain some sort of, some clarification on what the Board of Education policy is on bullying, verbal aggression, and physical aggression. More specifically, we were wondering, when an act of aggression occurs, is the administrator of the building supposed to contact the parents of the minor child? When an act of aggression occurs, are these consequences for the child, or what is the consequences for the child who is instigating these situations? If there is a case of bullying throughout the school year, should there be documentation in both students' files, and should the school or administrator be working to end this as quickly as possible? I'm asking this because our child has experienced all of these behaviors at his Bristol Middle School. The latest incident with our child happened just last week. And we at no time received a call from the administrator to let us know. My wife, my wife called the Board of Education to speak with Dr. Moreau and Dr. Car, or Dr. Carbone. And we, and was advised by the secretary to just go to the school directly, unannounced, and speak with the principal. After meeting with the principal and, and learning that the other student's parents were notified and that the principal was trying to place blame on our child rather than deal with the other student and their verbal and physical aggression, my wife called the Board of Education again to set up a meeting with Dr. Moreau and Dr. Carbone. And she is still waiting to hear back. Any answers you can give me to let us know what the Bristol Public Schools' plan is on resolving this would be greatly helpful.
I am sorry that that is happening to you. And I assure you that the two administrators on each side of me will be contacting you and setting up a meeting as soon as they can.
I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Tricia Wodowski.
Hi, Commissioner, Board. My name is Tricia... My name is Tricia Wodowski, and I live on Cozieni Street in Bristol. I'm also here to obtain information on the Board of Ed sexual harassment policy. I said I wasn't gonna do this. Involving schoolchildren. My child was involved in an incident where sexual harassment and misconduct took place at the same middle school as the Matos child attends and involved the same school administrator. I'd like to know what the policy is for sexual harassment and misconduct misconduct in school. What and who determines when suspension or expulsion is warranted when a child engages in a harassment situation, whether it be bullying or sexual? Who is required to contact the parent of the child involved in the harassment, as I was never contacted by any administrator, me or my ex-husband? The incident that involved my child occurred this past December. There has been no discussion. There has been nothing after the incident. This past December. My child was approached during class and asked a very embarrassing, very explicit sexual question involving her and this child in front of all the students and the teacher. I, like the Matos family, would like to meet with Dr. Moreau and/or Dr. Carbone to discuss this in a, in further detail. And thank you for listening to my concerns.
I don't want to be repetitive, but I want to say the same thing. I'm sorry that's happening with your child. And I know the two administrators beside me will talk with you and try to get to the bottom of this situation.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Would you both please give your contact information to Susan Everett?
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
We now move to deliberated items. Item 10. The first one up is the French Exchange of February of 2019.
Good evening, Commissioners. Amy Bastian, Supervisor of Word Languages. And I'd like to introduce Anya Rochester, who would like to present her proposal for the exchange to France in 2019. She gets a little bit nervous. She's great in front of the classroom, very different scenario when you're in front of the Board of Education. So without further ado.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anya Rochester. I am the French teacher at Bristol Central High School. And today, I'm asking for your permission to take up to 25 students to France in an exchange next February, students from both Bristol Central and Bristol Eastern. We've done this for 13 years. This would be year 14. And here I am, asking for your permission. With me today, we have Gina Gallo. We also have, who will, and she'll speak afterwards, we also have a Bristol Central senior. Her name is Nana, and she has experienced this program with me, and she's here to share her experience as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gina Gallo. I am here to, like Anya, seek approval to continue our now 13-year program. We have, as we have our French exchange, we have an Italian exchange, but we also have an Italian study abroad. Our Italian exchange just finished. The Italians were just here in April. And we are seeking permission to continue our partnership with the Babylonia Institute in Taramina, Sicily. And I also have some, we were supposed to have some students come in and chat today, but because of sports schedules and rain, they're not here today. But they did send testimonials. So if you would like to hear some of those, I'd be happy to read it. But I know that we're running on time. So you guys give me the, what you'd like, and we can make that happen. I would like to pass... I would like to pass the microphone to Nana. She would like to speak on behalf. I'd like to note that she is one that has been very, very influential in our foreign language program, has helped our world language program as a whole, not just the French program, so we're really lucky to have her here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nana. I'm a senior at Bristol Central High School. Excuse me if I fumble a little. I'm a little nervous, so sorry in advance. So I'm originally from Ghana in West Africa, and I moved to the United States in 2015. When I came here, I came here in spring, and it was right after they had gone on their exchange trip, and I heard a lot about it, and I was really excited to go on it. So it was very anticipated for me. Like, I was, sorry. I was very excited to go on it last year. So last year, I finally got the chance to go on it, and there was a lot of preparation ahead because I'm from a different country, and we had to go through a lot of legal work. And I was very, we had to, I had to leave school to go to New York, the French Embassy, to go get my visa, and I was very nervous that I was not going to get it because as soon as I got there, the security guard turned away another lady, and she was in tears, and I was about to cry because I was like, oh my God, I'm not going to get it. I'm not going to be able to go on this trip, and it's my junior year. I was really nervous, but I went in and everything was okay. Ms. Rochester had all the right papers, and everything went smoothly, and I was really excited. So we went to France, and I had a very great experience because I had a very good connection with not only my student, but the other exchange students, and we really meshed well. My favorite part was going to the school because it was really nice to see how the school is different, because, and like, how the school is different compared to Ghana and the U.S. It was really nice to see the school system and how they function. And also, it was just, it was very interesting. I loved sightseeing. And going on that trip, it was really beneficial to me because it's one thing to hear someone talk about a different language's culture, a different country's culture, to read it from a book and to experience it. So that was another thing I really enjoyed, and I just, the French program exchange, it helped me seal my decision to do something with languages. So because of that, I'm going to minor in French and Spanish in college. I'm going to double minor because I just loved it so much, and it was very influential to me, and yeah, thank you.
We have some similar echoes to that as well. I have two accounts, one from Olivia Rajat, who was not able to be here tonight, and one from a parent, so I'll read this very quickly, but it says, Ms. Gal and the Board, I know that this experience was for the kids. This was from a mother whose student hosted, an exchange student, and also went on our study abroad program. So she had experience of both sides of this, so I thought that this would be a nice way for you to kind of feel what the families go through. And she said, I know that this experience was for the kids, but I wanted to tell you how much my husband and I enjoyed it. This was one of the best weeks I've ever had. I was so worried about hosting, but it has been such a pleasure. I loved watching Nicole get excited about the little things that we see every day, just as I did when you took me to Taramina. I watched my husband laugh and try to Google Translate with her. I saw my daughter have a mothering instinct, and my youngest daughter wanted to be with her all of the time. It was a joy. I will be so sad to see them leave as I have spent time with Lucila, Franco, other students in the program. I want to thank you for all that you do to make my daughter's life so amazing. You are truly a blessing. If you ever need a helping hand, please feel free to ask, which I did in this, asked her to write this. Thank you so much not only for enriching our child's lives, but ours as well. So I think it's really important that you guys know that it's not just an experience for students, but also for their families and their grandparents. We have grandparents that say, this is, you know, we have grandparents that say, I came here to give my kids a better life, and now they're going back to Italy. This is full circle for a lot of people. So we really appreciate the support and seek enthusiasm from the Board because it is such a wonderful program, and we would like to continue it for as long as possible. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Not a question, but you know, my comment I make every year, I thank you so much for your work. I know you had an incident last year, and you handled it so well and represented the Board so well in that, and we thank you.
It was a wonderful learning experience.
We thank.
It was. It will not happen again.
We thank all the teachers on it, and all the chaperones ago. Fortunately, I've had the chance to do that with youth, and it is a challenge. And so I know the risk you're taking, but I know what a great experience you're providing them, so we thank you so much on behalf of the Board.
Thank you.
I suppose I shouldn't speak for the Board because they may want to vote differently, but I presume I would. We need to vote on this now, right?
On each one of them.
Each one, okay. So I would entertain a motion to accept the French exchange for February of 2019. It's been moved and seconded.
It's seconded. It's the 74th anniversary of the invasion of Normandy, which is really sad.
So it's improperly made and seconded. If there's not any further comment or questions, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we will accept the motion for the Italian study abroad in February of 2019.
So moved.
It's been made and seconded properly. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Now, I have to do a plug for.
I mean, if you were going to, I was going to.
Okay, I knew you were.
By all means, please.
Gina and another teacher in our district.
She's here.
Okay, have both put in grants for $2,500 for Farmers Insurance. You can vote with as many email addresses as you have every single day, which I do every single morning.
You're such a good girl. And just to piggyback off of that, it is a small amount grant. It's only $2,500, but will make a huge impact. But we are actually doing this because we submitted a $100,000 grant, and it did get approved, which I didn't get to tell you yet. It did get approved to go through to the next round. So in the fall, if we get chosen to the next round of this, we will be moving forward, and it's one of those things that if we get people on board voting now, it becomes a culture. It becomes normal. You will not delete my emails, because you will know it means something. So we kind of, this is a setup for something a little bit bigger. So continue to vote, and then hopefully we'll be voting for something a little bit bigger in the future.
Gina, send the reminder every morning.
I do. Don't be worried.
Gina, if you ever, you know, get tired of teaching, I think development is in your future.
Oh. I think we'll stick with the teaching profession. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have an item. The Board had previously approved a Bristol Eastern trip to Greece that was supposed to occur this summer, but the teacher who was the chaperone, Gary Fleming, has retired, and he has canceled the trip for the students, but I wanted to officially have the Board rescind its approval for the trip.
Requires motion, yes.
Yes.
Is it so moved?
Seconded. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. It's improperly made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is approving a change in our Child Nutrition Program designee to Mrs. Brown from ME. And once you approve this, we'll file the paperwork with the state and get it changed.
So the motion would be to, for the Bristol Board of Education to designate Business Manager Jill Brown as a signer for monthly federal reimbursement plans for Child Nutrition Program.
So moved.
So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Special Education Report, Mr. Heeter again.
Good evening again. I have some updates I wanted to provide you with, some updates of some wonderful events that have occurred this past month in the Special Services Department. And the first is, we had a elementary unified sports jamboree that was held on May 11th. We had very well attended by elementary programs throughout the district, and this year, we invited another district to join us. So New Hartford Public Schools bused several students in to join us, and then we had a real jamboree kind of atmosphere. So it was a great time. Good fun was had by all. The event would not have been possible without the generous support of many different providers, so I do want to recognize them. And foremost would be the Kids in the Middle volunteers. These are all middle school students who came to partner with a peer and to spend time assisting them, coaching, and assisting them throughout the evenings. So thank you to the Kids in the Middle volunteers. We also had a small group of adult volunteers from ESPN that helped out that night and organized and arranged several of the event stations. And lastly, the Bristol Association of Principals and Supervisors made a generous donation that allowed us to provide food and refreshment, which is always a draw at these events. So I just want to recognize all the efforts of the many individuals that contributed to the success of this event. Next, I want to share with you a truly special thing that happened beginning of May. We had a group of 32 Bristol Eastern High School students that made a trek down to our nation's capital, and they had a whirlwind tour, museums, significant historical sites, and they went back and forth between Washington and Virginia. What really makes this trip a standout from other enrichment and opportunities that happened this past year were the participants in the funding. All of the students were special education students enrolled in AIM courses at Bristol Eastern High School. The funding was secured through donations and fundraising activities that were spearheaded by a special education teacher, Dave De Giacomo, David De Giacomo. And David and his colleagues helped raise the funds to ensure that all students that were eligible would be able to attend, and we had 32 participants. I also wanted to recognize some of the other teachers that participated, Paul Philippon, Colleen Wieland, Mark Kilray, and Registered Nurse Barbara O'Neill, who accompanied the students as chaperones for the four-day trip. Also recognizing that this could not have been, this trip could not have been a success without the support of the administration of Bristol Eastern High School, central office administration, as well as the donors and volunteers that made this trip possible. They spent over a year fundraising to make this happen. So the reports back were that students and staff really had a great time. I would like to update you that we've just been informed by the Connecticut Special Education PTO, SEPTO, that the Board of, the Department of Special Services for Bristol Public Schools is being honored with the Spirit of SEPTO Award. So that is a wonderful recognition for our collaboration with SEPTO both throughout the year, as well as hosting some events at Chapter 126 over the summer. We'll be accepting that award next week at a reception at the Bristol Library. I also want to update you that we have submitted the IDEA grant for the 1820 cycle. It was submitted to the Connecticut State Department of Ed. I'm noticing you now, we'll have to vote at this probably at the next meeting when we get the approval of the amount. And just a reminder, we have 611 funds and 619 funds. Those are funds associated with special education as well as preschool education. The total is $1,941 and change. These funds support 39 positions in the Special Services Department. And then lastly, I would really want to encourage you all to join us. We have two unified theater productions that are happening. One is at Bristol Eastern High School tomorrow night. Starts at 6:00 in the auditorium, if you're available. And then the second is going to be next week at Bristol Central High School, and that will take place at 6:00 as well in the Bristol Central auditorium. Pardon?
7:00. On June 12.
I will have to check and get back to you. So we'll clarify that with an email. Thank you. There's no charge for these productions. They do accept donations. It is a wonderful event. If you have the opportunity to go, I would encourage you to do so. That's all that I have for you. Thank you.
Do you believe? We now move to curriculum.
We have to apply to.
Oh, we have to do the budget. Minor detail.
It's a tiny little thing.
Can't skip over that one.
As Commissioner Vivert said last evening at the Finance Committee meeting, there was an explanation of the budget. We were asked to reduce our budget by a little more than $746,000. We have about 23 teachers retiring this year, and so we're going to be able to get some of the savings from the difference in salary between a maximum pay teacher and a starting teacher in order to take some of these reductions in that way as opposed to reducing any staff. In the past, we've reduced staff, and I don't feel that we can reduce any more staff. We're also going to take some of it in supplies, and then we combed through the budget to see what was spent in certain lines this year and made some decisions by talking to people about being able to reduce those lines. And as we said earlier, in this current budget year, we asked people to stop spending except on mandatory curricular and safety issues, and that allowed us to recruit $300,000 to $400,000 towards the deficit that we are experiencing this year. So I'm going to ask that the Board approve an operating budget for the 2018-19 school year in the amount of $111,411,195. So moved.
We have a second. It's been properly made and seconded. Any questions or comments? One comment I will just make is I want to applaud the administration for the presentation of the budget. I think it was very clear, and I think the Board of Finance, City Council certainly understood it. I know it's the same information that we provided year over year over year, but for some reason, there seemed to be more receptivity to it this year, and I think the fact that we went to a two-night presentation certainly helped in, you know, giving the Board of Finance an opportunity to digest it in smaller bites. We're thankful for that and appreciate all the work you did. Budget seasons are always difficult for administration to get through, and we got through it.
I'd like to thank all of my team. There were a lot of hours put into creating the budget and then reducing the budget once we were given our number, so I thank them.
So if anybody else doesn't have any comment, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we move on to curriculum, and we get to accounting.
The Accounting I curriculum was presented first at Student Achievement Committee last month in May. I haven't received any questions since that meeting, and tonight we're looking for approval of the Accounting I curriculum.
An approval of the Accounting I curriculum, and it's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we get to adopt some textbooks.
Good evening. I'm here for a second reading tonight of AP Environmental Science. The first reading was at the Board of Ed last month. I've received no further questions concerning the purchase of the text, so I'm asking for permission to go ahead and make the purchase this school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Okay, and the second textbook I have going forward tonight was also brought forward for a first reading last month. It is our AP Calculus, I'm sorry, our AP Computer Science textbook. Again, no one has asked any further questions, so I'm pretty okay to purchase this one as well.
So it's been moved and seconded, seconded, properly seconded. Tina and Jen? You got that, Sue?
No.
Jen and Tina. And so if there's no comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ready? So last month, I presented the textbook recommendation for AP Government and Politics. The title of that text is American Government, Institutions, and Policies. Tonight, I'm requesting a decision for approval to purchase the textbook. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You're moving it? Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's Jen and Tina again. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
What did you say?
I said aye.
Oh, I think you said all. Okay. I am getting deaf. I'm sorry. All opposed, motion carried. I apologize.
The next textbook request is to purchase the title, I Say You Say, for AP Seminar. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them about that text as well. If not, I request approval.
Okay, it's been moved. And then seconded, Tina. So it's Jen and Tina again. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, last month, I also presented a textbook recommendation for AP Research. The title of the text is Practical Research, Planning, and Design. And again, tonight, I'm requesting a decision for approval.
Seconded properly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And just for the audience that's at home watching, it looks like we went through these in a real routine fashion, but these were all vetted in committee, so it's not like this hasn't been seen or heard or discussed previous to this meeting tonight.
One more textbook, last presented at our last Board of Education meeting. We are looking for approval for two textbooks for our Information Processing course. Thank you.
Seconded.
And seconded by Jen and Tina again. Any comments or questions? If not any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now come to policy revisions, and there's two affirmations to start out with, and I was thinking out of expediency that we could handle both of those since we're just affirming both of those policies. Do you want to lead us on that, Tina?
Move to affirm the affirmation of Policy 3110 and 3230.
Seconded.
It's made and seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried for those two policies. Now we'll do them one by one for the remainder.
Policy 3121, Local Government Involvement in Budget Preparation. The only change to this was to add a pertinent statute to the references in the policy, so I recommend approval.
Move to approve. Sorry.
Do we have a second?
Finished my motion.
Oh, I thought you said move to approve. I apologize.
Move to approve the revisions to Policy 3121.
Seconded.
Okay. Kristen is seconding that. Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Policy 3170, Budget Administration. This is a revision that has several changes that would be emboldened and striking out old language. The change in the title of the business official and a change in statutes pertinent to this policy. I recommend approval.
Move to approve the revisions to Policy 3170.
Seconded.
We have a second. Tina making the motion, and Kristen seconding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next policy, 6161.3, Property, Equipment, and Supplies, Individuals with Disabilities Act. This is a revision. It explains the process for identifying things that are purchased with that grant. They have to be labeled, and in the closing of schools a number of years ago, these materials, we had to make sure went into special education programs in other schools. I recommend approval.
Move to approve revisions to Policy 6161.3.
I seconded.
Kristen seconding again. Any comments or questions? If not any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, Policy 3210, Local Funds. I am recommending removal from the policy manual because we do not issue bonds, and that's what this policy says.
Move to approve removal of Policy 3210.
I seconded.
Kristen seconding.
I have a quick question here.
Yep.
Do bonds?
What's that?
In the school system? Do they resell bonds ever?
Not to my knowledge, but...
I don't think so either.
As part of our policy revision, we are trying to remove policies that do not serve us.
I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Policy 6161.21, Fees, Fines, and Charges. This is a renumbering. When I went through, I found that this policy was attached to another one, and so this is actually a new policy to the manual with its own number. Recommend approval.
Move to approve Policy 6161.21.
I seconded.
We have a second from Kristen. Any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Policy 6152.51. This is a new policy having to do with student privacy and surveys, and there are a number of forms in here that have to be sent home along with a survey for parents to give active consent, which means they have to sign yes or no. It's not like passive consent where you just, if the parent doesn't send back a slip, you can give the survey, and so I recommend approval.
Move to approve Policy 6152.51.
I seconded.
Kristen seconds. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on to new business. Is there any new business? Since none, we will move to information, and I will start with my left. Does anybody have information? Commissioner Grobowski?
No.
Commissioner Giantonio.
Giantonio. No, I do. Thank you.
Commissioner Dubey? Commissioner Giantonio?
Just really quick, and I won't go over detail, but I want to let people know that both Chris and I attended, excuse me, the Cade Legislative Update on May 15th. I have a booklet here. I actually grabbed an extra copy of all of the different budget revisions and legislative changes. There's quite a bit. Tom, I won't go through all of them, but some of them relate to things that we talked about tonight, the money coming back in Puerto Rico, no changes in ECS this year, but a million and a half reduced next year. And I should recognize that Chris has actually got himself on a committee to look at extracurricular sporting activities through Cade, so...
It's kind of funny because that committee's been in panel for two years and we've never met, so...
Yeah, so if anybody wants any information on that, I'm more than happy to provide it. Just one last comment. I do appreciate the fact that we will be moving, and I brought it as a prop tonight because I wasn't sure. We've asked several times to have the feasibility study looked at in operations. I do say kudos and congratulations. As I've said before publicly, I'm excited that the reuse of Moore Boulevard is going to be a school, which is a great thing, but my cautionary note is that there's a lot of work to do. I did hear that we want to try to open this up for the 100th anniversary on 2021, and we are opening up a fourth high school in Bristol, so I think we have some work to do in feasibility, and I'm appreciative that you brought that up to make sure that we talk about in operations next, this month.
That's it. Commissioner Vivid.
Just quickly, Mr. Chair, when you mentioned to the watching public that we do vet things in committee, I just want to re-announce, so to speak, so that people, in case people don't know, that those committee meetings are all open to the public. Cheryl comes to most of them. I think the only ones that aren't open to the public are Commissioner O'Brien's Personnel Committee meetings because most of that has to be held in executive session, but we welcome citizens and people to come to our committee meetings, and they are posted on our website.
Okay, we're going to start this end to do liaison reports, which often is probably the same as information, but we hold them separately. Any liaison reports? Nope?
Nope. Just very quickly, last Wednesday, I was able to attend Green Hill's 30-Annuel Mini Relay for Life. It was just a very nice event honoring both, you know, some of our teachers that have lost their faith and also family members. It's really nice to see luminaries around the field and still see the ribbons painted on the baseball field.
It's to you.
I have something to record. Okay, I didn't know who you were talking to.
Oh, I'm looking right at you. A liaison.
Just quickly, and Dr. Huber was here. I don't know if he's here any longer, but at Southside, there he is. Hello. For the second year in a row, he invited me during Staff Appreciation Week. I spent, I don't know, an hour and a half, two hours. He puts together a tray on wheels with all kinds of snacks and drinks, and we go classroom to classroom and office to office. It's a great opportunity. I love doing it. It's a great opportunity for me to meet, re-meet many of the teachers and the staff, and it's just a wonderful, it was a wonderful time. I had the opportunity to thank them. Our teachers are wonderful. Our staff is wonderful. They have the most important jobs in the city.
I don't really have one, but I did want to add to what you're saying. At Southside, I actually attended the Warrior Walk on May 23rd, which was a very nice, similar event that Ms. Taylor talked about with regards to honoring Connor and paying it forward to another young gentleman, unfortunately stricken with cancer, lame. So a very moving event, I have to say. So I appreciate you doing that.
Commissioner Dubey? Commissioner Giantonio?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Welcome aboard again. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grobowski?
No. I just wanted to mention a couple things. One is, I attended the Adult Ed graduation. I think it's probably about my 14th or 15th time attending that event, and I will tell you, if you want to go to an event where you're going to hear a tear or hit your heart in a little emotion, you should go to that event. To hear the story and the struggle and the obstacles the students have, the adults have when they come back to school, and how powerful it is that they finally reach their goal and graduate, it's very impactful. It really makes you think that it's why we're here, and what we're doing here makes a difference. And so I just want to prop that up.